Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission Study Session. Today is Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM at midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Due to the restriction of social distancing to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, the City Commission meeting will not be open to the public. In accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. Questions on agenda items will be read during discussion on that topic. Submit your question to CWilliamson@firstcity.org no later than 6:00 PM on July 7th, and I understand there has been no submissions by the public. Members of the public wishing to receive agenda notifications can contact the city clerk, CWilliamson@firstcity.org to be added to the agenda email distribution list. Agendas are available for viewing on the city website, www.levanworthks.org. We have two subjects for our study session this evening, two substantive subjects. One, Camp Leavenworth presentation, and then presentation of proposed 2021 budget and 2021 through 2025 capital improvements program. So we will start off with the Camp Leavenworth presentation.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Paul Kramer, City Manager, speaking. As everybody here and everybody watching knows, in 2019, we had the inaugural Camp Leavenworth Festival. It was, in my opinion, the highlight of the year for the city. It was an amazing event. I think we had a better response, better turnout, better outcome than anybody could have imagined. And as we turned our attention to an even better festival this year in 2020, just like everything else, we were disrupted by COVID-19. We knew early on that it was unlikely that the city would sponsor an event that sought to bring thousands of people to one spot at one time. I think our decision has been affirmed as we've moved forward. But we didn't want to just do nothing. We had too much momentum. We had too much of a talented team with O'Neil Events and Marketing. And so, working with them, they've come up with a creative alternative for 2020. And I don't want to even attempt to go through it because they are the creative team that came up with this. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kelly Wenzel, who is the President and CEO of O'Neil Events and Marketing. And then also, I think Jenna Smith from her team is here as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly and have her go through what they've come up with.
Thanks, Paul, and thank you all for letting us get creative once again. I think due to the impact of COVID-19, we believe that now more than ever, it's vital that the community come together and support one another. I think we can really say that now. Even a month ago, I don't even think we knew how important that would be. And so, we are introducing you to a new kind of event, and it's called Loving Worth, a community that cares. It's an ongoing celebration, our community, that we want to pull the community together through activities and events. But we want them to be safe, but yet still be able to connect with the community. So as we navigate this new normal throughout the month of September, we'll be launching a variety of activities, ongoing campaigns for you and your families to take part in. Loving Worth will be promoted through the basic websites and social media channels. But we're excited to kind of share with you what that might look like. We're developing things as we go along, but we have pretty solid plans in place that we want to share with you. So, Taylor, do you want to move it to the next two slides? The next one? So, one of the first activities we're going to do is this passport program. We're going to work with businesses and restaurants that are all beginning to reopen or are suffering the worst during this by using a Leavenworth Passport Program. So this is kind of for everybody. We will mail this little passport, Leavenworth Passport, that will have a variety of different places where you can stamp or get a sticker and sort of kind of create this community that can go as you will throughout the timeframe. And the businesses participate, whether they want to provide anything or just simply we encourage them to go there. And they'll get stamps, and in exchange, we're going to give fun little merch from some things that we'll create. So some cute little thing that we're looking at right now that will be good for kind of a variety of people that will participate. We're actually inviting all retail and restaurants, and we'll have some sign-ups available in the coming weeks. So we think this is going to be great, especially that this is all going to come into your mailbox at home and the good old-fashioned way, and you get to do this as you wish. Next slide. So another piece that we thought you guys are doing a wonderful job right now in the mural department, and we think that this could be a great opportunity to put the Loving Worth logo up there and really encourage people on one of the walls to take their picture and social media and just really promote Leavenworth as Loving Worth. And I think this could really go very viral. And it also does, if you remember, one of the objectives of Camp Leavenworth was eventually to bring people into the city. And this is a great way for your community to show people how great you are. And if this goes socially, then people from different cities and towns and the neighboring will hopefully come out and say, "That's pretty cute and pretty fun," and really come back with it. Next slide. Another fun activity we're going to do is utilizing the same similar space that we had Camp Leavenworth. We wanted to use the Leavenworth Landing Park pathway. And we're really use, as you can see, we're kind of pulling elements from Camp Leavenworth, but really creating these fun activities along the way. So this could include, you know, silly walking, walks, or we could set up a GoPro where people do the chicken dance or whatever we ask them to do. Hopscotch and just do a variety of things down there. So again, people at their own will can go down there and kind of participate in it, share it with their friends through social, or simply just have a good time and have an activity for the day. Next slide. So we also plan to do kind of, and this will kind of come out in a calendar form, that we'll do socially-distanced events and at-home activities. So while larger events like Camp Leavenworth aren't able to take place, we think there's some socially-distanced events and activities that you can take part in your communities, even at your home. So dates for the following activities are also being finalized and we'll share in the coming weeks, but a calendar will be included online and hopefully in that passport here so everybody will be able to kind of follow. Passport becomes kind of a program as well. So some of those at-home activities will include maybe camp at home. So we might have a night or two that we encourage people to camp out in their yard for the night or picnic in your front yard and have a date night in your driveway. So what we hope to see is more and more people, and Taylor, you can go to the next slide, more and more people doing this together, but like seeing others do it as well. So suddenly, you maybe have a date night, maybe you get your block together, and everybody's going to have a date in your driveway and just sort of be able to see your neighbors, say hello to your neighbors, more importantly, just to encourage people to come out at a safe distance, but enjoy community together. Love Your Neighbor Day, this could be a really fun activity where we encourage people to, whether it's your mailman, your trash person, your neighbor, to just give them a thing of flowers, maybe send them a card, or tag a little note, or put a little heart in your window. But we encourage everybody on that day to sort of give love in some special way to maybe somebody that you don't know or somebody you do know, but just everybody's kind of doing it, and there's a lot of loving worth going on that day. Next slide. The next thing we want to do is have a day where we do sidewalk chalk art contests. So we know many have really been good at this perfecting of chalk and art skills because I'm sure it's like, we live in Kansas City, but all over my neighborhood, this is all I see is chalk art. So we would maybe block off a few streets and sections, and we would have people come out, we'd provide the chalk, and they'd be able to have a section, we'd let them do their artwork, and we'd have some sign-ups and probably do some judging and pull in the community. Maybe you all would help us with that and kind of, you know, as one of the winners would receive a great Camp Leavenworth gift basket of merch that we have from last year. So it could be really fun, and it can be a real fun visual and a way for people to come out, and this is easily to social distance because we have streets and we can keep everybody safe. Next slide. And then we love this one because it was so popular at Camp Leavenworth, if you remember the smores night. We'll be hosting a smores night in Leavenworth Landing Park. You can pack a picnic, we'll encourage people to come to the park, put the desserts on us, and we'll be setting up the smore stations and complimentary smores. This is something we can easily keep people signed up for, we'll know how many they are. And as you remember, we had those little camp places, they can be socially-distanced and still be safe, and people can get their kit and create their own smores kit. And then maybe we encourage people to picnic in the park at a distance that night. Next slide. So we already have a sponsor for this one, and this one we think is really fun. We are calling this Camp Crafty T-Shirt Pickup, presented by Community America. So Community America is really excited to be a part of this. We had already had this in the works for Camp Leavenworth, and obviously, when things changed, they were excited to still be able to do this. So we will stop by the Camp Crafty tent during smores night, and people who have signed up will get their child can pick up their very own Camp Crafty coloring t-shirt and fabric markers set to create their own wearable artwork. Residents will be required to complete out-of-form in advance, so we have the sizes ready and we have all this picked up, and they'll probably be limited, and once it's gone, it's gone. We hope this becomes really popular, we think this could be a great thing you could take home and do with your children when you go home. And we will say it's for children. I know you want to have a marker, and I think it'll be fun, but they're encouraging this for families. All right, next slide. And I think it's really important that we talk a little bit before I get into the yoga, is the fact that we're looking at probably keeping this in September, and we talked around and around when we wanted to do this. Actually, we could have done it anytime this summer. But we do think it's really important, and we found it really important, the date worked really well for Camp Leavenworth last year because we have so many of the Fort families moving in end of August. And so, this is a great community thing to encourage them to explore, and we'll work with the Fort to really help us, help these families and new people in town to kind of explore the city. And what a wonderful welcome to see this. So we're excited about that. So we have yoga in the park. These are simple things that are probably already happening, but we'll just kind of have them as a point on the calendar where people can RSVP and come out and do yoga. Next slide. And this one, we're really excited. I'm sure everybody's heard that the drive-in movie nights are becoming very popular. We're working with a few vendors right now to finalize how many and then where. We've got a couple locations of where we can do this, where we will simply put up and do a movie. We might look at an LED screen option so that we can maybe do a movie a little bit earlier for the younger families and kind of family-friendly, and then maybe something a little bit later that would be more in the older kids and/or individuals that want to watch a movie. So this could be great, very safe, very distant. We'll have some parameters around it, but this is happening all over the world right now. If only we all had a drive-in because we'd all be doing very well. So we'll, more to come on this, but we're excited about this one. And, I think, the next slide. So really, this is Loving Worth. This is going to be, like I said, over a series of a couple of weeks. Most likely, we'll put it into a two-week timeframe, but some things will last maybe the whole month, like the Passport Program and some of those things. And we'll be promoting this on our social media channels and all of us as updated, and we'll actually ask if anybody has any questions or is interested in being a part of it, that you can simply go to info@campleavenworth.com with anything like that. We've also secured the Loving Worth domain, so we'll be encouraging people to go there and it'll shift them over to our website. So we are, we're excited, and I think it's a wonderful thing for your community, and I'm encouraged that you all are willing to pivot. That's the key word here, but more importantly, that community is vital right now, and there's creative ways to still be a community, but yet they stay. So I appreciate it, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Wenzel. Very informative and interesting presentation, and I do believe the city of Leavenworth is adaptive, flexible. So this is very, looks very, very creative. But before I say anything else, I'm going to go around and ask my fellow commissioners if they have any input questions, and I will start with Commissioner Wilson.
Well, I just want to say I love the concept, the timing is perfect, love the message, and I definitely build on top of it as a community. So I really appreciate you for always being creative, and thank you for, you know, what you're investing up into our community. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Yeah, Commissioner Preisinger here. Thank you also, O'Neil and CGSC, for the Loving Worth program. I think it's going to be, you know, excellent, and especially in these times, people are just wanting something that's will work. On the Passport Program, one question I have is how are you going to notify all of the various retailers, restaurants? Because I don't think there's one particular agency that you can go to in town and say, "Give me a list." And what I'm afraid will happen if, you know, 5% or 10% are left off, you know, the negative of that, if they're left out of the program because they're uninformed, could be deleterious to your program. So how do you plan on doing that?
I think we're still working with this city, with Paul and Taylor right now, on how to work with that, with the chamber, with anybody that we can kind of work with to make sure that we do it. But at the same time, it's going to be difficult to include everyone, too. And so we just have to be smart in how we make it, we don't want it just to be any business, right? We don't want a dentist's practice to have this in their office. This is something that we're encouraging that has more of a public component to it and that has hours that are going to work within the public timeframe that we're doing. So I think this is where we're really going to rely on you all to help us do that, and we'll come up with those clean-cut guidelines and really work with you all to say, we reached everybody, we tried, everybody that we know is within the, you know, certain area and kind of go from there. Jenna, did I kind of hit on everything?
Yeah, I think our goal next is to have kind of a forum up on the website where people can go in and basically apply to participate in it. That's something we'll push out through the Camp Leavenworth social media pages, which starting tomorrow, we're going to flip over to be the Loving Worth logo. So I would just encourage any other of the local community pages to help us get that word out and spread the word. We're obviously going to, like Kelly said, work with some of the lists that we have to send out emails and try to get to front of everybody, but we'd obviously love to have everyone help us spread the word. And that's with this activity and with all of the activities that we're doing, we want to make sure we're going to get some signage around town and make sure people are aware that it's going on. So we've got pretty much the whole month of July and a little bit early into August to get all those businesses signed up that want to be on board and participate in it. So hopefully, with everyone's help, we can get as many people that want to participate and that make sense with a program involved.
Yeah, but I appreciate the question, so yes, we're going to need some help. Yes, we don't, we don't want to cause anybody hurt, but that's where, we'll come up with those parameters and send them around and hopefully get some input from all of you.
And will the Passport Program be, what, August 15th, September 15th, or the month of September, or has that been decided yet?
It hasn't totally, but Jenna, I think our goal was the first of September, right after Labor Day, right?
Yeah, we were kind of thinking the month of September, so it's just a month long.
Right before Labor Day.
That way, it's, if we can get that out in everyone's mailboxes by then, that'll also include the schedule of events that won't start immediately, but it'll give them time to kind of plan and figure out everything, so.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Preisinger. Commissioner Leonhard?
Yeah, Commissioner Leonhard. Yeah, Kelly and Jenna, yeah, I'll tell you, you're going through a challenging time with your industry for sure, and I commend your creativity. You really had to step up your game, and you sure did. And I'm really excited about all these events. You know, it's a unique time we're going through, but I think this will be just as successful as the one is last year. I think it's a good idea to spread it out over at least a couple weeks or maybe a month so people can really take advantage of all the different events and enjoy it. And I'm just really excited about it and excited to work with you. So thanks for all your hard work.
Well, thank you for not just canceling because we want to keep busy. We like to use these brain cells.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Leonhard. Commissioner Bowder?
Yes, I agree with what the others said, and thank you for, I don't want to cancel anything more. We've canceled so many things, and this will give everybody something to look forward to. I like the mural idea. Keep it on, keep it on the first floor, though. I don't get up on ladders anymore. Anyway, it sounds like a lot of fun and a lot of different ideas, and I think it'll be good for our community. Thank you.
I'll just echo the comments from my fellow commissioners. I think the timing is excellent. Actually, the, even with the CGSC class on Fort Leavenworth does start a little bit later this year, but the families will be coming in during, during the month of August. Actually, the CGSC start date is the 8th of September. So you focused on the right timeframe, and your creativity is off the charts. One of your core competencies, if not the main core competency, is strategic communication and marketing, and that'll be key, obviously, just to kind of generate the spirit and the enthusiasm and the interest within the city. And, you know, we can figure out how to do that with our partners at Fort Leavenworth and maybe even without stepping over any legal things with the school district, just to get the word out there. I think, I think it will be very well-supported and by the, by the community, by the individuals or citizens and the families. So thank you for the presentation tonight, and I'll ask Mr. Kramer any questions or comments that you have, or?
The only thing, I think, we mentioned it, but just to be clear, we're, we're going to take the added expense and we're going to send the passport to every mailing address in the city. We, we didn't want to have to have people come try to find one or worry about getting one or not getting one, so that will alert everybody, and we'll include some information in there about the week, a calendar.
Good.
And so, I think, I think that was a really good idea. So everybody will get it in their mailbox, whether they want it or not.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Wenzel and Ms. Smith. Good seeing you.
Yeah, you too.
We'll see you again in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye. The next agenda item is the presentation of proposed 2021 operating budget and 2021 through 2025 capital improvement program. So I'm going to turn that over to the city manager, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is the annual week where the city manager gives an overview of the city manager's proposed operating budget and capital improvements plan for the following year. I do this on the Tuesday before we go into budget hearings with the commission, which is this Friday, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Riverfront Community Center. That is open to the public. We'll, we'll take necessary steps in that facility at the community center to make sure that we have social distancing, hand washing, hand sanitizing, and all those kind of things. But tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of what we'll, we'll see on Friday, starting with the first slide, general budget overview. The 2021 operating budget is balanced, as required by state law, and builds on the city's goal to provide high-quality services while maintaining sound financial standing. We saw the value of sound financial standing this year when we went out for our bond issuance. For the first time in a long time, we had Moody's Investor Services really take a hard look at our financial history, our reserve position, our debt load, because cities across the country were seeing downgraded bond ratings. But the city's strong financial position, even in the economy we were facing earlier this spring, was such that we maintained our bond rating. So that's always sort of the overarching goal in the, in the budget is to maintain that sound financial standing. The city-supported mill in the proposed budget is essentially flat from 26.898 mills in 2020 to 26.902 mills in 2021, should be 2021. That is a three one-thousandths of a mill increase. It's almost impossible to get it the same on the state budget forms. You change, you know, $20 here and adjust it. That amounts to less than 75 cents for a homeowner in the city of Leavenworth. So we consider that a flat, flat budget and can say confidently that there's no tax increase for the citizens of Leavenworth. The 2021 operating budget was crafted in the most fiscally uncertain period in recent history. For all the hardships created by the pandemic related to the city's financial resources, the most challenging aspect of creating this budget was that we don't know how the economy will respond over the next six to 18 months. So a few of the COVID-related factors that shaped the 2020 budget. First of all, 2020 sales tax. 2020 sales tax, we don't know how the rest of the year is going to come in. We are on a two-month delay on getting our sales tax information, so we have just a couple of months of information. How that affects the following year's budget is, are you going to have a shortfall? Are you going to meet your forecasted expenditures for the current year, which of course then affects the following year? Then the 2021 sales tax, that is the primary revenue source for the city of Leavenworth. Forty-five percent approximately of the city's revenue for the operating budget comes from sales tax. And right now, we're unsure through the rest of this year and certainly unsure through 2021, how that sales tax revenue is going to flow through the city. The budget for 2021 forecasts a flat sales tax. We've had strong sales tax growth over the last at least five years, anywhere between 3%, 4%, but we are budgeting a flat sales tax at this point to be conservative with the budget. Another variable related to funding is the CARES Act funding. The city of Leavenworth is eligible for about $6.7 million in CARES Act funding. However, we don't have that money right now. That's a process that won't be finalized until at least August, if not later, and we aren't sure of the uses that we submit, which ones will be determined to be eligible. So we don't know how the CARES Act funding would impact the 2021 budget. Next is the effects on development and investment. We don't know what projects may or may not happen. We don't know how they'll be delayed. We don't know how projects that we have, tax increment financing type situations, how they're going to perform. And so, a lot of that is just unknown. In the state of Kansas, you have to have your budget for this year, for 2021, done by August of the previous year, so there's a lot of unknowns forecasting a budget. Next slide, please. So some of the specifics of the 2021 budget that we continue to monitor and evaluate is the effect of a flat or negative sales tax growth on projects, initiatives, and priorities. In the last couple of years, we've added a rental property coordinator. We've added a drug unit for the police department. We were able to do all of that based on increases, forecasted increases in revenue. How do we continue to move the city forward if we have a flat or negative sales tax growth rate? So that was one thing we considered. Funding and implementing a public transit program in 2021. We understand that that is a high priority for the city commission and for the city as a whole, and so that was one thing we definitely considered when creating the budget, and I'll get to it here in a couple of slides, but that is included in the 2021 budget. Ensuring the conservative budgeting and spending practices directed by the city commission to reach and surpass budget reserve goals are not squandered due to economic turmoil. Basically, the city adopted, the city commission adopted a budget reserve policy, and we have been able to grow our city budgeted reserves to a level that allows us to do things like maintain our bond rating. We did not want the unknowns of the economic turmoil to threaten the reserve position that we've worked so hard to maintain. So that's why this budget, as you'll see as I continue to go forward, maintains what we do but doesn't add much. We wanted to maintain a reserve position, which we have. Continuing the implementation of the city employee classification and compensation program to invest in the recruitment, development, and retention of employees. The city had a study done by Springsteen Corporation to look at the entire metro region and also statewide at similar cities to make sure that our police officers, our firefighters, our code enforcement officers, our city employees were on par with similar agencies. This will be coming up, the third year of the implementation to get there. We phased it over five years because of the cost, and so we did continue that in the 2021 budget. There's always costs related to health insurance and also retirement expenses for KP&amp;F and CAPers, which are always a consideration when you create the budget. And then we did, in a bit of bright news, we want to account for the potential positive economic news that could occur after the adoption of the budget. If sales tax rebounds better than expected, if 2021 doesn't come in- if 2021 doesn't come in flat, but comes in at 2%, 3%, 4% growth in sales tax, we want to be prepared, have the flexibility and the adaptability built into the budget so that we could do projects and have projects ready, and so I'll, I'll get into that here in just a second. The next slide is a slide that I like to include every year. Created it a couple of years ago, but I think it shows, it's designed to show the citizens of Leavenworth what you're getting for your property tax dollars. We do it on a market value home of $150,000. We can extrapolate that out to 200 or 250 pretty easily. But for a market value home of $150,000, you pay in property taxes to the city of Leavenworth about $38.67 per month. For those dollars, you receive police protection, snow removal, street repair, the community center, animal control, fire protection, code enforcement, parks, playgrounds, and pools, capital improvements, and health and safety inspections, just to name a few items. I'll also note that on your property tax bill of the taxing jurisdictions, the city of Leavenworth is the lowest. The county and school district are a higher level of your property taxes, and the city has remained essentially flat for as long as I've been here, so for about 10 years. We've actually had a decrease when we did the sales tax initiative a couple of years ago, but as far as the property tax rate, it's remained unchanged. Next slide, some of the revenue highlights that we highlight each year. The city's experienced an increase in assessed valuation from $219,502,504 to almost $229 million. That's a property tax increase of 4%. It's important to note, though, that about 1.5% of that is money that we've collected, but we have to give back to developers who the city's entered into economic development deals with. For example, the hotels have property tax tips. A lot of the downtown area is in what's called an NRA, so improvements that they've, those businesses have made, they get property tax rebates. So we collect a 4% increase, but about a percent and a half go back out to businesses, to developments throughout the community. Sales tax revenues and the tax funds and fees are budgeted to remain flat, as I mentioned, and the only budgeted revenue increases in property tax. We are seeing several revenue sources that are expected to decrease substantially. State and county gas tax is down. That's just, as well as our franchise fees. There's not a great reason for franchise fees. They did, Evergy did notify us early in the year that revenue is down, and we, it's a formula, it's a percentage that the city receives. And then, of course, interest income, as the economy has suffered tremendous downturn since March, our interest income expectation, our forecast is, is also going down. Two highlights that I know is of great interest to the public each year. I'm happy to announce that we will not recommend any refuse rate increase for 2021. As a reminder, last year, we did 6%. That was to purchase a truck that was not scheduled because of a breakdown that we had had in one of our fleet. But based on our position, we felt comfortable that we did not need a refuse rate increase in 2021. Sewer rate increase of 3%. Last year, we had an 8% increase. A lot of that was due to some of our 1972 original equipment at the plant, and so that, that increase helped offset a lot of those costs, and we've been able to reduce that back down to what's essentially a pretty common increase of 3%. That's not just the increases of doing business. We have a big UV ultraviolet light purchase that we need to make in 2021. The city is required by the state and by the Environmental Protection Agency to do disinfection with our water, and that requires a process that we use UV lights for. There are more than $100,000 to replace a bank of lights, and so we have that coming up over the next couple of years. On average, it depends on your water use, but on average, that's about 91 cents a month for the homeowners of Leavenworth. This next, the last bullet on there, I'm proud of, I mentioned this just briefly a minute ago, that the general fund includes a budgeted reserve of $3,140,000, which is available to support unanticipated expenses or underperforming revenues. The 2021 budgeted reserve is 27.1% of the budget, which is still well above the city's reserve target of 16.67%, and it is exactly actually 0.1% higher than we ended with in 2019. So we are not budgeting to use reserves at this time. Next slide, please. Some of the expense highlights. The community center and parks and recreation budget have been moved from the operating budget to the CIP mostly. Some of it will remain in the operating budget, and those decreases in, in, from the revenue, lack of revenue that we've had this year. The community center's been closed, there's been no room rentals, no sports programs, but we've kept, all of our expenses are sort of static with, whether it's utilities or payments on improvements to the community center, elevators, and all those kind of things. So we did move those to the CIP. You'll see that as we go through the CIP on Friday, but we tried to leave enough flexibility in the CIP to, to still be able to do projects. The city's contributions to police and fire and the, and the employee pension system increased slightly over $18,000 for 2021, and health insurance costs are budgeted to increase 8%. We make a commitment to the commission each year that we won't go over what's budgeted. We don't know what our renewal rate is now, but if we can't get to 8% or below, we'll change our plan to get there. So there will be no increase beyond 8% for this budget item. And then, the, the, as I mentioned before, the classification and compensation study, the 2021 portion of that is $123,218, and after this, we'll have two more years of the implementation of that. But if you'll remember, and you probably don't, last year, the, the portion was $268,000, because what happens is we phased it out over five years. Most of the employees received a two-year adjustment, and so a lot of her dropping off, and then as turnover happens. So the, the number will continue to fall next year quite a bit as we finish off that compensation and classification study. Next slide, please. If you can see this slide, I know it's hard to see. I'll print it off for you and bring it on Friday. It's just good information. It shows the general fund revenue by sources. So sales tax, property tax, sales tax, again, I mentioned, is about 45%, 44 and change. Property tax is about 20% of the city's budget, franchise fee, charges for service, and those numbers are included. It's just kind of interesting to see, city by city, how their budgets are funded. Next slide, please. Likewise, it's always interesting to see where your expenses go, where your general fund expenses go. So police department and fire, public safety are 66% of the city's budget. And then, of course, smaller departments like Public Works at 15%. City administration, community development, finance are all small percentages of the city's budget. The next slide, we always, of course, like to share with the commission what, what the proposal is for employee compensation. It is recommended that the 2021 compensation plan include a 2.5% across the year, across the board increase for employees implemented mid-year. Mid-year helps a little bit with the budget. And then, of course, as I mentioned twice now, the increase of $123,218 set aside for the phased implementation of the classification and compensation study. Just a couple more slides. Next slide, please. The CIP, a couple of years ago in 2019, we combined the operating budget and the CIP processes together. We used to do those one in the summer and one in the fall, but there's so much interconnectivity between the budgets that we now combine them. So the CIP is the capital improvements program, so that's how we do projects in the city. The funding sources for that, just as a reminder, are the city's portion of the countywide sales tax, a portion of the city's regular sales tax, and then also GO bonds or general obligation bonds that we issue for pavement management program. So the CIP overview, the non-pavement management portion of the CIP is, is all sales tax. And for the 2020 budget, because of the uncertainty, we've held $400,000 worth of projects that we hope may be this year, as we get more information, we can release, but that's what we've done, held off on those projects. And then, for 2021, the management team worked to create a program whereby if the second half of 2020 and 2021 revenues are more positive than expected, alternative projects can move forward. So we created a tiered system. The resulting funds, tier-one projects for 2021 are public safety and infrastructure, and those will be approved and budgeted in January to move forward, and I'll give you an example of, of what some of those are. And then, tier-two projects will be represented on Friday, and in the budget book is 2022 projects, but it is our hope that many of those will be possible in 2021. Next slide, please. So the, the 2021 project, first and foremost, we have, we included funding for the city's portion of the public transit grant program. We kept this, the increased amount of road funding at $2 million, so that includes 1.35 million of general obligation bonds and $650,000 of CIP sales tax dollars. Those are countywide sales tax dollars. This is the first year that we've gone to 2 million, and we plan to do those again next year, that same amount of roadwork. Then we get into some public safety information. Additional storage for the police department's video storage, or that's what stores the body cam footage and the dash cams and all the information that the police department collects. We have included budgeting for the replacement of the 1992 fire department aerial truck. This is a big-ticket item that we've been putting off for a couple of years, but we were able to, to work the financing on this, where we will budget for the start of this in 2021. We will replace two police patrol vehicles, one detective vehicle and one animal control van, and also replace the police canine. We'll get into more information on Friday with Chief Kitchens about the status of those vehicles, why we need a new police dog in the animal control van. Of course, we have the ongoing debt obligations and allocations for the business and technology park, Thornton Street project, 10th Avenue project. The animal control facility is still on the books, and then the city did bond to buy three new fire trucks a couple of years ago. These are not related to the fire department's aerial truck. And I did want to mention, we have put Doherty Park playground equipment at the top of tier-two. I'm hoping maybe that we'll have enough, the funds will come in in, in this year to be able to do that. If not, it will be first up in 2021, as, as soon as we know that there's sufficient funds. We had to pull back on all the recreation items, but certainly, we know that the, we promised this one to the community, so it is at the top of the list for tier-two, and hope to get that done as soon as we can. And then finally, the conclusion of my budget overview is the recommended 2021 operating budget and five-year CIP reflects a cautious approach to the fluctuations in local, state, and federal economy due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The recommended budget invests heavily in city's infrastructure, employee development, and workforce stabilization, while making modest enhancements in parks and recreation, community resources, and city capabilities with a flat mill rate. Additionally, careful consideration in expenses in the previous years have allowed the city to reach a stable reserve position and in fact, maintain the exact same reserve percentage that we did at the end of 2019. If you, if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain a few tonight. However, we do have Friday where each department head will come in, as well as LCDC, the Leavenworth County Development Corporation, the Main Street Organization, and the Leavenworth Library will also be there all on Friday. So thank you for your time. I, I want to quickly thank Ruby, Melene, Brandon Mills from the Finance Department, and Taylor Tedder, the Assistant City Manager, and the formation of the 2021 operating budget and the 2021 through 2025 capital improvements program.
Yes, it looks like, not having, I mean, it's a big, a big package, a big notebook, but I have started reading through it, and it's very well organized, and the letter, and which you've kind of summarized in your briefing, is very well-written, very well-organized. And I know last year, the city and the Finance Department were, I think the Government Finance Officers Association awarded them a distinguished budget presentation award, correct? And, and I know they're trying for that award again, and I think, I think they've got a good product to submit for that award. It looks very, very good. So those are my initial comments. We look forward to the present, to the meeting, the budget meeting at the Riverfront Community Center on Friday. But I'm going to go around and ask my fellow commissioners if they have any comments or questions for the city manager, and we'll start with Commissioner Wilson.
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Preisinger?
Yeah, Mr. Preisinger here. Thank the city manager, Assistant City Manager, and the Finance Department for this budget. Once again, it's remained relatively, it has remained flat. Our, as the city manager mentioned, our mill levy for the city of Leavenworth is the lowest in, in the county, and I believe it's definitely in the lowest five in all cities of first class in the state. The lowest mill levy in the state for a city of the first class is Overland Park. It's around 13 mills versus our 26 mills. If you've read the paper, they're suffering quite a bit because most of their revenue happens to be retail sales tax, and everyone knows what's happened to retail over the last couple of months. The total amount on your house property tax and your property, amounts about 135 mills. Our portion, the city portion of it, is only 20% of that total 135 mills if you live in the city of Leavenworth. The other portion is the county. You pay, I think, 37, 38 mills to the county, so almost 50% more to the county to support the county in taxes in which you pension the city. And of course, the school district is in 65-mill range. Just wanted to point that out, that we do have a very low city property tax. We're the lowest in the states where cities are first class. I know you'll hear rousing people saying city's taxes are, are far too high. No one likes taxes. Anyway, we can do, either hold a plan or reduce them, we will. But we are doing an excellent job, and I thank the city manager and the finance people for ensuring that we do keep it flat. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Preisinger. Commissioner Leonhard?
Commissioner Leonhard, no questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowder?
Yes, I'll save my questions for Friday, but I do appreciate the flexibility that you've built into the budget, especially with things being so up in the air right now, and the tier system, you know, is, is really good. We're glad, I'm glad that we, we have that. Thank you so much.
Yes, I'll echo all the comments of my fellow commissioners, and I will say that in terms of the no, the no rate increase for refuge, I think that's a big deal. And then, a lower sewer rate increase of 3% versus what we had to do last year, that's, that's something, that's good news, I believe, for the city commission and also the citizens within Leavenworth. So I'm glad you worked that, and I don't think there's anything else. We'll have a full day on Friday. Look forward to that, that day. Can I ask the city manager maybe to get, just have a hard copy of the goals that we came up with, you know, and approved about a month ago for the commissioners, and maybe your presentation too? Because you have some good charts there.
Yep.
Okay, so that concludes the two formal topics for today's study session, but I'm going to go around the horn and see if there's any further input or questions or, or comments, really. So I'll start with Mr. Kramer. Anything?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Preisinger?
As I've said at each meeting for the last month or so, the COVID-19 problem is still with us. You can see the numbers in Kansas are growing, have grown. There was an outbreak that was traced back to Field of Dreams. Hopefully, people won't get too sick, or we won't have too many deaths, but I just plead with people to wear a mask if you're in a public, public place. You go into retail, if you go to church, or wherever you might go where other people are, wear a mask. If, if surgeons wear a mask in surgery, and they have to be on their feet for eight hours, it does not make you dizzy. If it made you dizzy, a surgeon wouldn't be wearing a mask because they couldn't perform surgery. There are certainly some people that can't, but 99% of us can. Please do so. Protect your neighbor, protect your grandparents, protect people my age, protect your kids, protect our future. Please wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Preisinger. Commissioner Leonhard?
Commissioner Leonhard, we all are people first. We are all facing challenging times. We, as people, have to reach inside ourselves for that inner strength. Together, we are strong. Have faith, hope, and love. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leonhard. Commissioner Bowder?
I don't have any other comments tonight. Have a good evening.
Okay. As the mayor, I'm last up. Just, you know, about a week ago, we found out as a city that St. Luke's Cushing Hospital was, by the 1st of October of this year, will be closing, with the exception of the primary care doctors and some of their specialty clinics in the primary care doctors and some of their specialty clinics in the Cushing Medical Plaza building. So that came as, first of all, surprising news and disappointing news, and I just wanted to share with the public a comment that I, or statement I submitted to the Leavenworth Times, which I was published on their website, plus, I believe, in their Wednesday hard copy edition of the paper. But it's not a long statement, but I just wanted to, since we have people hopefully listening in, I'll go ahead and repeat it. So this was what I said as the mayor of Leavenworth. As a city commissioner, mayor of Leavenworth, I am angry and extremely disappointed about the decision to close Cushing Hospital. This decision is fraught, especially for the citizens of our city in the midst of a pandemic. Once again, St. Luke's Health System has made a decision with major ramifications for Leavenworth citizens without bothering to give the city commission an explanation, much less adequate advance notice. Now, I must say that I got, I got, I think this was announced on Tuesday, I think they started letting their personnel know sometime on Monday evening. I checked on late Tuesday, maybe late Tuesday, and found that there was a voicemail on my cell phone from the operating officer here of Cushing Hospital, but still, that's, to me, that's not really adequate notification, but I must say that I, when I wrote this, I did not know that. But once again, that was just on like the 11th hour, 59th minute of this notification. I intend to invite the CEOs of both the St. Luke's Health System and Cushing Hospital to explain the decision to close Cushing and the steps they will take to mitigate the impact to their Leavenworth patients. I don't know whether they'll accept the invitation, but a letter will go out in the next day or two asking them to come and talk to the city commission. We'll see how that goes, and I'll keep the commissioners informed about what we find out there. Yeah, just in terms of the, I think everyone, well, not everyone, because there's some confusion in terms of the people getting the city commission confused with the county commission. The county commission is the one who had a meeting last Thursday to make a decision to opt out of the governor's executive order that required masks or other face coverings in public. So just to, you know, that county commission, the way the law is written in Kansas, they have that authority, they have that responsibility. They met, they decided to opt out of the face covering, the mask mandatory aspect of the governor's executive order. Now, they did say that the remaining provisions of the executive order of the governor, Order Number 2052, subject to the above amendment, which was their Board Order 2020 hyphen three, shall remain in full force and effect in Leavenworth County. So I just wanted, as a point of clarification, in terms of how that works within our state and what our county commission decided to do, I wanted to make that clear to our, to our citizens. And finally, we're not going to get, I think, the Fourth of July and the Third of July was interesting from the standpoint of fireworks, but let's just say that I've lived in my home for 18 years, and there was a dramatic increase this year in the amount of fireworks that were used. And of course, we have a prohibition against fireworks. There was a, there was a referendum that went in front of the citizens in the early 80s to mid 80s, and, you know, it was passed by a fairly sizable margin that fireworks in the city limits of Leavenworth are prohibited. So I'll just say that I think at some point, not in the next week or two, but we, I think, want to come back maybe as a commission and talk about what our guidance is to the city manager and the police chief with respect to enforcement going forward in future years. Recognizing that this year was hopefully an anomaly, but still, there have been obvious violations and violators of this policy in previous years. So that's all I say, have to say unless my commissioners have anything else that they would like to comment on. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn, well, it's not really a meeting, but that'll adjourn today's study session, and we'll see everybody Friday morning bright and early at the Riverfront Community Center. Good evening.